Hey Jim.
Hey there, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. Welcome from Vermont.
I hope it's nice up there.
It is today, beautiful.
Hey Kim.
Hey.
All right, everybody.
Yes, sir.
Leslie, we're recording, correct? All right, I'm Kokamola, I'm the Chair of the City of Brighton Planning Zone Commission. And I'm gonna call our Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 meeting to order at 6:34 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call. I am here. Ms. Bergeron is here. Mr. Boris is here. Mr. Jenkins is not here. Mr. Rice is here. Mr. Russ is here and Mr. Streeter is on the Zoom call. So we have six attendees. Right? Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 11th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Motion to approve. So Mr. Boris. Second. Second from Ms. Bergeron. A discussion on motion, any? Changes, comments, questions?
Is that the meeting when you were not here?
Yep.
Then probably shouldn't say, even if I listened to it. I mean, that's okay, that's fine, that's fine.
All right, um. Listen, I have just one question, that's like the formatting and the tools, because you have to get onto the.
Oh, it will be on all. It, when we posted, it will be on the.
Yeah, editing on a lesson, okay. Um, all right, in terms of content. Uh, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Opposed, okay. And they'll be consistent on that.
I guess my only question on that is, it's been approved, that format. With following Robert's rules has been approved by the commission. So. I, I just don't know. I'm the. What the other year opposed.
Asking me, I'm sorry, I can't. Well, I, I said before, I, I mean, I checked too, I think that's the legal minimum that's permissible, but I, I don't think it's adequate. You shouldn't go beyond what's the minimum that's permitted, and I, I, as I said before, I don't know if you're at that meeting or not, but I, I mean, I think both. So the public knows what has occurred, so the. The zoning officials know what's occurred, but they have to try and figure out what's going on on the piece of property and. Historically, 10, 20 years from now, so people know, I, so maybe legally sufficient, but I just think. Uh, practically and, and for purpose of the public, I think we should have more.
I just, I'm interested, and I very much respect your objection to the format, but we settled the matter. By having the discussion in the low end, so, I mean, you're well within your rights to.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
But it seems like, you know, that the matter, we, as a body, we kind of made the decision that we're gonna accept it, so.
That's true, then you guys will continue the protest.
To the minutes, it's sort of distorting, it, it's sort of, um.
Distorting the.
Distorting the rhetoric, because it, you know, that's it, that's a procedural issue, we agreed on that we would accept those minutes in that format, so. I'm just making that point.
And you guys will want to, that's fine, then you know, vote no, and then it'll be approved, and.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping in. All right, um, next item on the agenda is continuation of the public hearing for Site Plan Number 498. Special permit number 472, Grand Lavelle, 70 Bridge Street, new two-bedroom accommodation.
It's been almost a month since I was back here. Probably dead, everything completed. If you were there last time, it was most standard. Didn't get completed, uh, and I have completed, I went back to my civil engineer. He redid the parking lot plan, adding the handicap space. And revising the parking plan to include the full eight spaces for that building. Uh, one was on an empty box. Spaces now, uh. For particular to go spaces. And handicap space, adding the entrance and exit to the parking plan. Uh, and so that, uh, that site plan is complete. And also, I have been working with photometric lighting specialists, and you should all have a copy of that.
We're sent. Yeah. Say, or. Can't say that I have a mark about these here.
So going to the specification, this can also be included if not for. Oh, maybe it's one of the goal material. Just gonna be picked everyone through, one has been. Completed since our last meeting. We open this, on the first page is the civil engineering drawings. Uh, so civil engineer. Site plan. Out of films, the four, the eighteen parking. Yeah, it also shows with PM, yeah. Awesome. Just like. Spoke about last time. Engineer, involves the ground boundary and took a graphic survey. Third, it's. Is, uh, my lighting company, Pizza Slown Solutions, that did the photometric lighting plan. With specifications on all of the. Uh, actual. Uh, lights that will be. And around there. That compare along with all specifications for each of the products. There was a question about how you would push it. The names of each work. Uh, what's wanted to be. Added on the perimeter. And how they're working. Near contour, in this state design, and they have, um. Reduce this for me and go.
The last page of the.
Yes. Yeah, all, all the plans. So I believe that completes everything that was requested last time. And so I'm here today to tell you the rule. What is special for them, so that I can work at the building department and. Do what's necessary to get the bill.
All right, um, listen, any comments from you, they're a chance to look at these.
Um, your questions, I mean, um. Second page of the drawings. The safe fan. Is. It doesn't match the safe metal, now referred to each.
This would be, you're correct, this was the original. Um, but then, in the first page, included the parking layout change from our last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, so the first page is the after description of these parking spaces.
Okay, so, um, one thing that. I would like to see, because I know parking sign add it to that one. That apple spot, just so that. It's clear that.
Oh, so the, so they're using the angle to get into the eighth spot. So what's happening is that a vehicle will be able to go into there. Uh, and then park. That is a parking spot.
I, the shaded part.
Oh, yeah, the shade, oh, I see what, so the extension, you want that?
That angled extension, just add it, no parking sign.
Perfect, yeah.
The. You know, just wanna be sure that I was interpreting this correctly, um, that the. Landscaping matches up to landscaping mark on the second page. So landscaping is in the second page, parking in the third page. That was. That was the means of. Lighting cleaning.
Oh, I always get you, any questions or comments from commissioners on? Updated documents for the application? All right, um, any comments from members of the public on the application? Comments from the public? Anybody on that? Anybody on the Zoom, Mr. Streeter, anything?
You're muted, Jim.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
Did, did you have any, did you have any comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, um. Buddy, everything? Satisfied with where you are?
Move, we close the public hearing, let's go.
Thank you. Last motion to close the public hearing was your second, yes.
Second.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't looking, so, all right.
Motion from Mr. Russ, the second from Mr. Boris. And any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing done, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is the audio down? Our music, I muted it, Jim, sorry.
You can hear it on here. All right.
Sounded like aye, Jim.
I'm having trouble hearing you, it sounds like you're in a fish tank, to be honest with you.
They did us, yes.
Yeah, their sounds are up pretty high.
Is there, uh, so, so. We would have a motion to approve, uh, is there a motion to approve this? Uh, we've got, uh, we've got one condition, right, that was said. To add no parking sign to the alignment to the angle space, so. So this is the additional change that we need, so. Uh, we closed the public hearing for Site Plan Number 498, Special Permit Number, Permit Number 472. Uh, for Southern Bridge Street, um, is there a motion to approve the application? Uh, the, uh. Addition of no parking space to, no parking sign on the end space. So, sorry.
I move that we approve Site Plan Number 498, Special Permit 472. Uh, with the, uh, with the addition that, uh, a parking sign is added to the end space. Okay. Plus, second, Mr. Boris.
Further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing done, all those in favor of these, uh, approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, alright, both their extensions, alright, so. Application is approved, 600.
Thank you. Question, when can I start working, building the apartment together?
To get, I don't know, I think three mile R sets and all of the materials and, and, and cheap paper copies. They say, turn. Will attach the nets without. That's already.
So two divisionals, also this.
Uh. My one, it's, it's like, so. Point tomorrow. On rails, so it's a little bit more.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Almost all.
All in person. One, one who's jumped from that. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Site Plan, we're still public hearing, so happy to get this, I'm on a draw. 176 Bridge Street for a hookah lounge.
This is, let me, uh, let me just clarify what this is on the agenda for, this is on the agenda for. You to, um, give an opinion on whether or not. A hookah lounge is included under something that may be more general, um. In the GC zone. Or where, anything that's not included in zoning regulations is by definition not allowed. So it's a question of whether you, um. Sort of looking for an opinion of the commission on whether this fits into something. The closest that I found was, um, personal services. But it's before you, for your. Uh, opinion on it, and the, what we're for needs to go through a. Uh, modification to the zoning regulations to allow.
If I could just, also, just a full disclosure, the physicist mentioned the BYOB ordinance, uh, I'm Chair of the Brighton Economic Development Commission. And we're, uh, being asked for some input on changing that regulation to, uh. To edit 10 o'clock, so just. That's in front of me, just wanted to.
Thank you.
And that's the, the town, not the city.
Correct.
So I guess, uh, well, go ahead. Guys, go ahead, go ahead. Tell the story.
Uh, it's a hookah lounge, that's like the. It's a hookah lounge, we serve like, to our own, uh, we know drugs, you know, alcohol. Uh, just the weekends, like the Arab people likes the hookah. So they get their family invited, they can, if they want food to eat together. That's it, not don't serve food, don't serve alcohol. Spoiled.
So this is a, this is a, you know. This would be an establishment that, uh, that is largely social with, and this, that. Uses this tobacco and this device called a hookah, correct? Of people to share, yeah, smoking, I guess, one, one thing that I had, um. Getting it on my radar was. The BYOB alcohol issue. Yeah. Is there, see, have an ordinance that restricts that? Or.
We don't, we don't have one that allows it either. There are places where you can bring. Your own food, your own drinks, um, parks, sometimes beach, um. Things like that, so there are places where it exists. Um, within the city, but it's most, that I only know, and I've only been able to find. Open spaces where that's. Been allowed in the city, that does, does.
So that's the, uh. I guess that's, you know, one, one question I have is, is about that. I had, I guess, I hadn't, I hadn't seen that come. What's that, the, the free, the free year old alcohol?
Actually, my, my hard spot with it is the, is the smoking at public place. The Clean Air Act, the, that you clean air act, I mean, I. I, I'm not fundamentally opposed to the use of the space for that, but it's my understanding that, uh, public places are restricted from allowing smoking. And, and places, we have all, we have exemplars in the city that are private spaces with private membership. Uh, that allow smoking indoors. Or have in the past. And, uh, so I, that, that's kind of where I, I would need to do more homework on whether this is allowed as a, as a public enterprise. Uh, that allows tobacco use.
I'm not sure that it qualifies as a public space. Um. It is a storefront. So I'm not sure that it's a different thing, I think.
Would, would it require membership to attend?
Like an entrance fee, yeah.
Well, but, but.
No, no.
A bar, you know, may charge, cover charge to enter, right?
Well, it's the entrance, uh, fees, and we sell them, that's.
Right, but anybody who comes can pay the entrance fee, anybody from the public.
Yeah.
Age restriction.
Of course, that's why you want.
So, these are, um. These things exist in other locations in Connecticut, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So is, I. Is there a way to know if the, if the regulations apply here, I, I mean, I know that, you know, Mr. Russ is saying, he's talking about, like. You can't smoke in a restaurant or a bar. That's, that, that's not allowed. Um, it's more exceptions are no longer, so. Um, I don't know how though, I don't know how, where this fits into the, into the state regs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking because I don't have enough knowledge on the subject, I, that's, that's my only question, like I said, I think that warrants a little more. Homework on the regulation. I'm not, I'm not dismissing it. Without further investigation. And you're right, there are examples of, of bars in Connecticut, so. There must be some way, I'm just wondering if it's a. Something that we didn't, didn't consider in terms of a special permit, or, you know.
It is like 25 of the rounds.
They do, I know they exist in Connecticut, they, um. It's an interesting distinction, maybe, Rogers, um. I don't think, I think because its sole purpose is to. Smoke hookah. Um. I'm not sure that the public. Aspect is.
Along the same vein as a cigar bar?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I, just something I found, Connecticut General said, like, hookah lounges are not specifically regulated by the state, they currently. Currently, hookah lounge is currently operating, not served alcohol or food, so it's not to be in violation for the state's no smoking. So if you were serving food or alcohol. It would be, it would be the, uh, confluence of. But, thank you, okay.
Good, that's good, it's a good, good question, because I would like to clarify that, I guess the other, the other, like. Reason that we're, that this is on our agenda tonight is because this is not, I mean, it's not specifically allowed use by the regulations. Right, but there are similar things like cigar bars. You know, so there, there are other types, similar types of businesses that, you know, could. You know, we, we don't have any in the city, but, you know, if we did. We treat them differently, you know, we have to. Would need to rewrite the regulations every time something new like this comes up, or is there a way to? You know, can, can we look at this as something that's similar to, you know, we, we allow, in the general commercial zone. You know, we allow medical marijuana dispensaries, we allow eating, drinking establishments. Um, you know, we, we allow retail sales, tobacco, and things like that, so. Is there, was it reasonable to?
Yeah, like.
See how this, so.
The one that I was sort of looking at as the closest to. Is what is, uh, personal services. And. Again, it's, it was clear cut, we would be here on, on this kind of occasion, so. This is for your interpretation.
The, the law, the zoning law defines personal services, stout establishments primarily engaged in providing services. Involved in the care of a personal, the personal goods or apparel, including, they're not limited to barber shops. Beauty salon, shoe repair, health club, certified massage therapy, laundromats, tailor, dressmaking, mill, millinery. But it seems to be a different type of. Um, so this seems to be a different type of, of use than. Definition of personal services.
I would just sort of back to, um, I can share, from the town perspective, the issue of BYOB. Uh, the question was, after a certain hour, to not have, uh, you know, when you have a liquor license, you have responsible.
Uh, the question was, after a certain hour, to not have, uh, you know, when you have a liquor license, you have responsible people that are. Watching and doling it out, if, if that's a component of this, that the, the question on the town side was, you know, checking the. Chief of Police about safety issues, uh, and other things related to that. Those are uh, very early discussions on the town side related to the regulation, but it's definitely something to be considered here. Related to the dispensation of alcohol or how that operates and whether that fits. How important that is to this function, I don't know that it's necessarily part of what a hookah lounge needs. To be that, or to be from your.
Al, alcohol, the alcohol, like, there is an excellent hour that you will not allow any alcohol. Uh, and concerning like, ten o'clock at the M P M, we can do this, maybe we can do it like in the. Uh, middle of the weeks, or in the weekends. Be so hard, we, we, we only would like to take profit, more profit. So that would be smart.
I just, it's, it's the um. Uh, uh, to be honest, I have myself just started contemplating this as we got the referral from um. The town council uh, about it, so it's sort of new in my mind on how you regulate this stuff and handle it and um. You know, with B Y O B safety issues, so I'm just sharing, should be something thought about in context.
Yeah, we've got a security.
What's that?
Security, sorry, that's like five person's security, the door inside and to make like. To make sure that they are over twenty-one. No guns allowed or any weapons allowed, so anybody would need like search by the.
Well, it, I did, it's a good, it's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up, but um, the uh, the, the. The two A M rule, that's the state alcohol consumption.
Sure.
At the establishment, right, so that, that, that holds even on the days, they're open till four A M, right? So, some of the, some of the hours on, on the weekend were, were six P M to four A M on Friday and Saturday. So you have to stop at two A M no matter what, correct?
Yes, of course, yes, of course. Um, and even the liquor, uh, to be like maximum, in my opinion, I would do it like twelve, eleven using. More early.
I um, I guess the, so again. The real question is, how's it, how does it fit, or does it fit in the regulations? That's, got the, the, the B Y O B and the, I think that's smoking thing, I think we're, we're satisfied, um. Other thoughts about the um, about that, about how it, how it does or doesn't meet the. Where regulations are, are currently written? Clearly, it's, it's, it's not a specific use that's allowed.
Correct. Probably becoming to you the same.
Okay.
Thing. I think before you have a few options, one is, one is to make it a. Is to just decide whether you distinguish this as something that does not fall under the existing zoning regulations. Or not, if it, if, and that's sort of. Um, binary, you know, it does or it doesn't. Think we all agree that it's a little gray, um, which is why I brought it to you, um, but. The um. And then, options are, if you decide that it does fall under. The existing regulations, then you would hear the application of. And decide whether you would allow it, whether you would, what conditions would then you would attach to that. If you decide that it doesn't fall under our regulations currently, then. Two pieces, do you want to make, you want to allow? An application to go forward from the commission or has the evidence, bring forward an application to add it.
I'd like. Only other question, would it be appropriate for us to ask any other? Would it be appropriate for us to ask for input from other agencies or any other uh, departments? When we're uh, understanding the impact of this juice?
There's, there's nothing prohibiting us from doing that, um, I did do some. I did do some research on this, for instance, I, I know, you know, I looked into the fact that they're continuing. Not because of personal experience, but I know that they exist in Connecticut. Nikki Haven has, at least one or two, or do, um. Anything, anything that might have been an issue in terms of behavior. Uh, really does not fall under land use, it falls under uh, police and that's a problem between both police. So, um. Their staff could, B Y O B issue, um. I know they exist, I know there are plenty that exist that have not had problems. Um, and I also happen to know that there's, there are some that, that exist. Or existed and that they're closed down because there have been issues, but that's the same thing as you would have in a bar. You could have it in a restaurant, you could have it with a, like, any kind of a social club. That's behavior and that is.
So that's one, but city council ordinance issues, not something.
That piece of it. But the land use itself is the commission, right?
So there, there was one on Pleasant Valley Road. Temporal closing, so.
That's what it is.
I don't know, I don't know why.
It was a behavioral issue.
Behavioral issue, but somehow it, that, I don't know what the, what the town's regulations, they specifically allowed that. How it was, how that use was allowed under the town's regs, the calls. Page Bob or somebody, just to see. How, how, how the town. Mr. Street, are you, any thoughts from you?
I, I've had, I've had some difficulty hearing, again, your voices are coming like they're in a fish tank, hopefully you can hear me. I have a, a few things that, that I'm concerned about. One is the control of individuals bringing in alcohol. Two are the safety issues, uh, I, I certainly, I, I think, I, I think I heard Mr. Boris bring that up. I think we should have the input from the uh, police or for the public safety aspect as well as parking down there. I know when the, the previous bar was there, the owners across the street or the buildings across the street. And the parking lot belonging to the diner, uh, they restricted parking, so that would re, restrict a. Very limited number of parking spaces out in front. And then the hours, I have problems with the hours because of the fact there will be alcohol there. Uh, where other liquor establishments or bars or whatever have a closing hour. And I know from the past, my own experience, that people, after they close their bars, they were going to the, the previous, the. Lounge that was up on Pleasant Valley Road, uh, Route twelve. So those are some of the concerns and, and I thought that possibly uh, that the uh. Public safety aspect should be addressed by the uh, uh, police department and, and. Let, let them provide us with some information also to give us a comfort level.
All right, thank you.
I, just so you know, I did talk to the police chief and um. As a um. He recognized what sort of what I said before was there are behavioral issues that are their jurisdiction. But that's not a, it, it's, it's like, you know, a bar fight. It, in a bar, it's not any different, it's sort of criteria in terms of behavior is. You know, you don't, you can't. Decide whether or not a bar can go in somewhere because there might be a bar fight. It's, it's the same thing with this. You can't assume bad behavior, and if there is bad behavior, it is a police matter, not a thing.
So, so, so the issue for us really is that, I mean, the, the, the alcohol, the, the, that's more of a. City council issues, that correct, or the, the land use issue as well?
No, you have the, you have the authority to say. Well, state statute is what governs.
Right, that's two A M.
Right, but in terms of, you have the right to decide whether, you know, if a restaurant were to come in. And they wanted to have a full bar, that would be part of your jurisdiction, or other. Things that someone would need to get in terms of licensure and permitting, alcohol permits and all of that. But that's in addition to what you would vote on, whether you would approve how it. Having that kind of use. Okay, the different, the biggest difference is that one is then like listed in regulations.
Right, 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 I mean, well.
Explicitly.
And in a, in a bar, the, a bar is serving the alcohol, right? If, if to some extent controlled.
And they're serving it to that.
Right, right, no, that means by terms of the al, the alcohol, it's different. That this is a B Y O B, so there's no, you know, there's no bartender, like, decides to get. Too much to drink, or whatever.
There's a, that's, that, anybody would start like, you know, we will control it, so, yeah, but, maybe ten secure. So we'll control the range as much as we can.
Okay, all right, um.
I would say I think the threshold issue is, is whether or not it fits within the definition of the use of G C zone. And the only one that, that argued, you know, I think, personal services, that's what we're saying, that it doesn't fit the definition of personal services. So, all, all the other stuff we're talking about is, you know, whether or not you want. Have the zoning law mandates respect, but I think the threshold issue, as I say, is just to keep fit a whole many of the permitted uses.
Although it doesn't explicitly, there is the, but not limited to.
There's a.
There's the, yeah, there's the but not limited to.
Yeah. No, but I mean, first of all, to fit the first part, I don't think in the second part, if you're gonna try and analogize those are pretty different uses.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, to me, it's, but it's also similar to a restaurant or a bar, there's a, there's alcohol, food. Although not served by an establishment, and it's a, it's a social situation, so that. There are similarities with, with uses that are allowed, right? But this one is not specifically made or covered in any of our.
I, I would parallel this to a bar, um, before a personal service. And I, I, I think there are enough. For me, I think there are enough parallels to a bar, uh, the, you know, social setting was something provided by the. The owner, that uh, I, I could see fitting this within the definition. Terms of land use, I think there are other things that are beyond our purview to, to be considered, like health department. You know, uh, building inspector, you know, the idea of uh, tobacco being now burned over. Coals, you know, buildup of C O two, you know, all, all those kind of things that, that, you know, the, the adjacent neighbors concerned about. Uh, you know, smoke infiltrating their space, any of those things, I think that's more building specter and health department and planning itself. By.
Thank you, other, other opinions?
I, I just like to ask the question. Like with a bar, they were under the tobacco and alcohol licensing? Which is.
A bar in general?
Yeah.
Well, the alcohol licensing.
So is the hookah license a, a mission like that?
You're not like, is it licensed? For the hookah?
Well, that's, that's supposed to be.
But is there a license?
A license for alcohol, it's a license for alcohol.
Okay.
It's, there's a license for tobacco, yeah.
Because at least with the alcohol, you've got somebody who's saying, okay, two o'clock is closing. And there's no one observing where. Sounds like somebody could bring alcohol in up until two o'clock.
Yeah.
And they could be there till four or five still drinking.
No, I would stop bringing it, for, very security that would not allow any alcohol, and even I would stop it. Not allowing anybody to go inside with alcohol, like maybe twelve, so to elect finish. And for the tobacco, yeah, there is a license for tobacco. Uh, and a license for the vapes also, I have a station on twelve. So I have like two licenses, one for tobacco, one for the vapes, so I have to, yeah, to grab that tobacco. Maybe like eight hundred dollars.
I would think for your purposes, he would want to wait until the town decides. Whether it's gonna be a tanaquana because you stated you wouldn't be able to exist with the tanaquana. Yeah, and that's nothing to do with us.
That.
That's town orders, there, there would be a.
That's separate from us.
Exactly, that's what I said, it has nothing to do with us.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the city, the town ordinance about B Y O B, with the fact that the city doesn't have any ordinance at all. Do we know?
I don't believe so. But it would, but it's not, whether it does or not, it's not governed in any way by town ordinance.
Right, right, no, the city could institute an ordinance after the fact, and this is not grandfathered in, right? They would just have to obey the ordinance.
Not necessarily.
Totally depends on how it's worded.
There's a hookah lounge and cafe in Connecticut that serves food. Because they were open as a hookah lounge before the no smoking indoors policy, so they are granted, probably, just as an example.
See, my concern is related to the alcohol, I mean, the licensing of. Alcohol establishments, you have responsibility, um, you have people monitoring drinking, um. I don't know, that's just top of mind, what, I, I could agree with you related to the uh. The hookah aspect, I bet it's the B Y O B portion, it, that, I sort of, not sure. What we should be considering in terms of land use issues related to that, or it's a city ordinance issue, it's sort of a logical. I think, well, there's, there's, there is apparently, there's, there's nothing that prohibits it, it's. I mean, like, the city, like, the city parks, they, you know, there's no alcohol, there's no alcohol, spec, the parks, like, the, the beach.
Right, but when they do the uh, what is, five K runs of beer.
Right.
Thing, that it gets lifted with that, so it's not a, it's not a totally.
But it's, but, but you, you know, in general, you're, you're not supposed to be consuming alcohol, like, at least you. But, I, I know what happens. But it, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's the policy of the parks and rec department, is that how it, is that how that is?
And, and I believe it is governed by the ordinance, at least additionally by ord, by. And I believe it is governed by the ordinance, at least additionally by ordinance, by. By city ordinance that you can't drinking. In public places. I would wanna research that, though.
Alright, so, um.
But that said, I'm so sorry.
No, but.
This would not be a pu- outdoor public site, so.
Right.
I think there's, I think that's an important differentiation.
Right, and and that's.
They may have the same result, but it's it's it is a.
Right, and that's where I was stranded, that's that's where I was stranded. That we, there are, there are restrictions for uh, public consumption at parks. With things like that, but there aren't, there aren't any, there's no, there actually aren't, there's no city ordinance that would prohibit this, correct?
That I'm aware of, which I'm aware of.
So if state. Alcohol consumption rates would just apply to the hours that alcohol would be consumed on the premises. State doesn't, frankly, BYOB. Said, I mean, that's. I don't know if that's true or not.
I de- I I would definitely.
Okay. Um, other other commissioner of thoughts or input on the, you know. Comparing this situation to 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 a bar or restaurant.
Um. I don't think that's a. Really an analogy you can easily make of the definition, it's meeting and or charging establishments. If this fits up with that definition, it's under only the uses presently allowed, there's always. Whether it's shown as a difference.
Other comments?
I tend to agree with.
Jerry?
Jerry.
Okay, um, Mr. Streeter.
I I just have one question, and Leslie, maybe you can answer me, and it's just. We as a commissioner, as a commissioner. Can we, if part of our deliberations or consideration. Use public safety or consider public safety in our decision?
You can, you can, the, um. I would just. Make sure that you would be considering the fact. That it is in, within a closed and secured storefront. It's not like it's something that's happening out in the parking lot. That those would be two different scenarios.
So what was his question? Are we allowed to consider public safety in our deliberations?
That's a question that I have.
Alright, so so Mr. Streeter, do you have an opinion on whether this it's. Mr. Streeter, do you have an, do you have an opinion of about how this fits? In under the regulations in terms of, you know. Is it? Could could be, could it be treated as a personal service establishment or similar to a a bar or a restaurant? Um, or do you do you feel that it's, you know, it's really not, not, uh. Appropriate based on the on the way the regulations are written?
I I think I'll just reserve my my comments for for myself for now, alright, I do have concerns. Uh, and I expressed what my concerns were, and we'll go from there.
Connecticut does have something called a cafe, tobacco bar liquor permit. And it says in bold note, this permit is for existing tobacco shops to add alcohol. This permitted not for a bar or a restaurant ads.
So the the town's BYOB currently says no alcohol between midnight and ten.
Yeah, the discussion is to move into ten PM. So it sounds like we've got. Three folks who definitely think that it doesn't fit in under the regulations. And two of us are thinking it might fit under the, as a as a bar. And Mr. Streeter, whose concerns are around public safety. And so. Its census of the commission is that it doesn't need, uh. That that's what I'm, right, that's what it sounds like to me, is the consensus of the commission is that it doesn't. It's not permitted under the regulations, so that's the current. That's. That's the 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 three, two, one. Opinion, right, that's that's what I. Except that, okay, so. We all, we all all in agreement about what.
So there are options that I'm happy to talk to you about, um, and we can. We can talk about that in the next couple of days, make a layout what those options are.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a whole.
There's always one.
There's always, there's always a next step, whether it's whether it works or not, I'm sure, but there's always a next step. Okay.
So we don't, I mean, this is not a follow.
Correct, this is. For an advisory.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, almost here.
Thank you. Alright, um. Thanks, everybody. Ongoing business, discussion of possible zoning regulation amendments. Um. So we had, uh, we talked about this, um. On March the sixth, we had a special meeting to. Kind of discuss what we heard from the public at the public hearings. Um, and the reaction, uh, Mr. Streeter to to, uh. Pull together of, you know, some ideas about about what we. What what might make sense in terms of how to forward, so.
Actually, I think the way that it was, that it ended was, I was asked not to do that. Because there was, um. Ongoing discussion. Um, so, but. I think that. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but to summarize where it was left off was basically a conversation about. And a a general, um. A general commitment to dividing the GC zone into smaller zones, allowing. Um, a variety of building heights, four and six, where that might be. Um, and one. Possibility was to require that there be no more than four stories at street height, but then. Uh, where particularly on the north side of Bridge Street. Allowing, um, buildings to. Go down behind that cliff. Uh, up to two stories, so they could be a total of six stories, but it would be four stories at. The, uh, street level.
Right, and then there was the, I think there was, I guess that there was. My takeaway was that there was, um, less concern about, um. Taller buildings, um, you know, on the, on the east side of, uh, of the highway ramp. And the north side of which.
Yes.
Where the, you know, where the lower rent used to be, where that plaza.
Right.
Where the hotels up.
Yes.
Um, so the, you know, the, but the, I think it was clear that, uh, you know, that there was concern about, uh. You know, that based on public comments of on. That there was concern about the height of buildings on the east side of Thames, right? And the south side of Bridge. And also the, you know, on the, on the, um. West side of North. Those were the, that's that's what, that's what I heard in terms of the public.
Yes, and the other thing that was discussed at the last meeting was that. We would make the, um. Wetlands area open space on the west side of North Street. And. There was still discussion, some discussion about how exactly we would. Um. Deal with some of the outstanding areas on where the multifamily housing. Is where. Some of the residential, there were a couple of residential properties on Broad Street. The triangle, I think we talked about limiting that to two stories, just because the site is small. Something that could be a storefront, like a coffee shop or something like that, just talking about scale, not.
Broad northern Bridge.
Right, with, you know, maybe an office above. Uh. Not. Not just similar from the height of the, the buildings. There now on Broad Street. Um. But. And then, yes, and then you mentioned. Set plus, that plus, so, Bridge Street.
So that, so so that triangle is part of the general comparison, so.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the, and the back side in there is. And you're now at thirty-five, so that's a lot of two dwellings. Right, so we, I mean, the, the. The two dwelling unit is is issue, that that would be the concern, yes. Cause that that that's makes housing in this area totally a nonstop. It is, you know, the, the revitalizing Thames Street has been. And that's the goal of the city, it's been in the POCD, it's in the twenty nineteen POCD, it's two thousand eight POCD. And that the twenty nineteen study that kind of out gives us, you know, a, a. A plan for how to do that, what kind of things we should do to make that happen. That plan is recommends more denser housing. On the larger pieces of property, uh, in. Bridge and Thames Street, northern, I'm sorry, northern Thames Street and the north side of each, right, so. Those are the areas where. Larger buildings would be. Possibly, possibly, in addition to the areas east of the highway. So, I mean, that's, that's where the, those are the, I guess, that's the, I. Based on the, based on the input from folks, I don't, I didn't. Hear that there would be a lot of opposition to the four story facing. Uh, Bridge Street and that, you know, taller, and the more stories in the back down the hill. I didn't get a sense of that was gonna be. Controversial. Um. Anybody, you know, agree, disagree with that interpretation?
The the only, the only, uh. Issue with the draft that was in said. Uh, was that, as I recall, at the end of our discussion at the, the, the pro board over there. Um, I think where we left it, our general consensus was the top left corner of the map. That section to the west of, uh, you know, northwest of, uh, the Thames Bridge, yeah, from there. Uh, I think that, uh, there was more of us that that thought maybe that should be in the lower, not allowed to go to seventy-five. But I, but I, again, I I don't know that that was a full consensus or just a few voices, and I think it's.
You're talking about west of there.
That's right.
Yeah, I think that's my recollection, I think the public was controlled, that they didn't want high rise on anywhere on Thames, so. Yeah, I don't think that should be.
I I think we should, um. Um, move as quickly as we can, be back to the public hearing and learn, seeing addictions, I mean, I know you're all seeing in the news and. You know, we can get specific about what's going on with that developer, but bottom line is you're seeing gentrification here. That is displacing people, so, you know, let's, let's get specific on, you know, what are the limits, no higher than four stories. Uh, you know, I think we have enough in front of us to get the map approved and back to public hearings, and I think it's incumbent on us to move. Back to the public discussion and and improve something, we this is not a huge area of town, and we've. Been dealing with this now for a couple of cycles, so I just think we're just, uh, just let's get specific at the meeting and get back to a public hearing.
You know, and I still go back to what I started with at the beginning of this, that I think we need to to have some more facts and figures before we go. To the public, I mean, the potential traffic impacts, all the types of things I've mentioned before, I I don't see how you can. Uh, consider anything unless you have some, some type of. Uh, base studies to understand how much housing is there now, uh, you know. What is the impact gonna be? And and I'm repeating myself, but I think that there are a number of other things that need to be done before we even consider any type of. Uh, zone change, including. Pro- provision in the zoning law that can require us to, or can can allow us to require. Recreation land, so we don't end up with something like we added five corners where they're putting too much on one piece of property.
That was included in the text of the application, this was before last time.
The, um, but but I mean, the zoning law itself should be changed, that effect, um.
Zoning law or like at the state level or in? It was included. I don't know, you have the, the right to do that, it has to be done. Um, no, I included that in the, uh. In the, that was in the text of the application, it was before last.
Okay, I don't know, we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, the other thing that I said, by the way, was I think they should be a floating zone as well. Uh, so that, so that somebody can ask for its application, so we have a specific project in front of us instead of, uh. Uh, you know, putting it out there, and then all somebody has to do is come in and make a site.
So, have you read the housing study? The town housing study, granted, has a good providing, but it's not sure. There's one that was, um, three years ago and another a minute down last year.
Well, that that should be on the record here, I mean, some should provide it, have it in the record instead of, uh, you know, just its output or something.
Well, it it's, it's easy enough to do it, it's on, it's on, it's on the website.
But I I think we've already discussed, like, the floating zone, and Leslie, um. Give a good discussion as to why that doesn't give planning, you know, POCD kind of planning direction and popcorn filling types of development. And, you know, frankly speaking, if you look at it from somebody who's. Gonna put a proposal in our community, you know, to constantly, it it doesn't feel like, um. The process of having a floating zone is so odorous, odorous to the, to the applicant, you're probably not likely going to have a lot of people. Entertaining investment in housing in this area, and I just think we really need to be aware of, um. The appearance of being exclusionary here, you know, we can create such obstacles to going to public hearing with, um. With with, you know, incorporating information from the last public hearing. That it it, you know, it makes it appear as if we're not serious about, uh, addressing the housing needs of. You know, across the spectrum in our community, so let's, let's get to some specifics we can agree to, take a vote, get this back out to the public. I I think my. My perspective on the whether it should be fixed or floating, uh, is is that. I I think that our intent was to be proactive. You know, in in alliance, uh, in alignment with planet conservation and development. And and this was a first attempt to start working on the existing zones to upgrade them, update them. Um, with that, with the intentionality of. With that, with the intentionality of setting parameters that, that we want to have, rather than. A reactively acting on a particular, uh, property where, uh. You know, there, there is less time for the public to absorb a request, a change in parameters, and, you know, a, a. Site plan with a skyline and all those things, um, and I, I think based on the feedback we got in our public hearings, uh. There was less appetite for. You know, for, um, a particular proposal driving us to make regulation changes, that, that there was, there was, you know. We're gonna be called into less question by, by creating a tapestry there, you know, setting the parameters for zones. And having applicants come to fill within those zones, that we have, uh, got public buy-in, we've changed the rigs, if we build it, they will come, you know? And then, but if we wait and we get a particular application and they wanna go to eighty-three feet, here's why, uh, then. The public wants to know why it's coming so fast and why we're on board with it, and why we're willing to make these correct dramatic changes. Which, with, uh, you know, what feels to the public likes minimal, uh, feedback and input. So, I, you know, I think that there's always a possibility of a floating zone, they'll allow for that. So if something, you know, comes to a, a different property and. We're not bound to not consider it, I just think that this is proactive, uh, upgrading, updating the zones. And, uh, and making some opportunities, and then we'll see what happens.
I agree a hundred percent in that if you, like Jason said, if you doesn't. If you designate the zone, then people know it's coming, as opposed to somebody only. Big parcel in the middle of the residential area, and saying, I wanna put up this big building and spending all that. Money to get the plans and everything else in order, and then for us, you know, and, and. Maybe rightfully so, to say, no, that's not good for that neighborhood.
I think another piece of this is, we, we keep talking about parcels and looking interior to parcel, but I think another thing that's really important to the public. And to developers is, what is the, what's the, the predictability of what's going to go next to you?
Yep, exactly. I, I also want to just say on this, uh, the corner here, the thirty-five to seventy-five feet. Instead of changing that to just thirty-five feet. Thirty-five to seventy-five feet with no more than four stories above. Looking for both metrics.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the, the seventy-five would accommodate a six-story.
Correct.
So, uh. So I, I think, well, one thing I think we ought, we ought. Probably in terms of concrete proposals, so on the. On the east side of Thames and the south side of Bridge, right, we should, I suggest we look at the height there at thirty-five. That's, that's a, that's, that's what it currently, that, that's currently what the zoning allows. And that's was where I think people had the most concern that someone was gonna build a, a six-story building in their backyard, right? Now, is that, I mean, there are a couple of, there are some parcels along in, in that area that could accommodate a larger building. Is that, um, is it, would it be possible then to, is there some mechanism we could use to? To allow, uh, larger buildings there, if they were, they were appropriate, is there, you know?
An applicant can always come in and ask for.
Here, just to be clear, the applicant, if they think that they have a good reason to ask for something that extends it from the public, you know, it's still. Way a lot of them weigh in, and, you know, but otherwise, I think, I, I heard a lot of the issues were related to the transition from this front. The area, and it was very, very good points made about that, so.
Right, and if we have the height set at thirty-five feet above street level maximum. Then, then we are not forced to consider something that's, or we can consider, but we have to do it in the context of a public here.
You'd actually, depending upon how it was written. What you can do is. Write the regulations so that you have. A maximum of thirty-five feet on the east side of, as you said, uh, it, the east side of. Bain Street and the south side of. Bridge Street, so that's where you've got the shorter. Buildings, then across. Bain Street, you go to, you allow them to go to four stories. Um, and I would say. It, it should be written as two to four stories as opposed to one, you know, up to four stories, because that. By having a minimum of two stories. And I've done this in other places, you actually help to keep the, the street fabric. Consistent. So that people don't feel like they're sort of missing teeth. And, uh, so do that, and then. This. That triangle back.
Yeah.
Decision on that, but then the fourth, then the four stories would be. Fifty feet on the north side of Bridge Street with the ability to go down in the back with the two additional stories. What I want to choose, because you only are gonna see four stories.
Sure.
And then four to six stories where the roller rink site is, where other lights is, and then up the hill to the. Where the hotel is. And then we have to fix something other, figure out what we're gonna do with something other.
So, 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 I mean, the, the role of discussion. If, if, if there's general agreement about that approach, right? Then the discussion really boils down to what happens at the corner.
Happens what?
At the corner of Thames and Bridge, right, the, it's slightly subbed down.
If everything, yeah, if everything.
If there's two large parcels there, then that's actually where the. Bain Street study suggested putting the, the large, the larger buildings on, on those two parcels.
I, I, yeah, I would say though, that based on the public feedback, and being consistent with the, the area just to the south of there. That such a large parcel could probably accommodate multiple four-story apartment buildings, you know, uh. And not have to go higher, but could still increase the density of, uh, of housing units. So I, I, I think that, that we would be, you know, um, we would be. We would have a, uh. Little trouble getting through four-story limit in that area, and I think that would still allow for.
A four feet, a four story, or six or.
Four.
Here.
Where, where we now say thirty-five to seventy-five. That area.
Yep.
Cut that off that. What would have to be four stories.
Four stories.
Fifty feet.
I think that makes sense, given the other things that you have a consensus on. Instead of going two to four to your four sixes. And then back down to four. It would make sense to them. It's sort of fitting to me.
And you could still have someone come in, if they wanted to go to five, for example, and, and ask for a regulation change to do that.
And that makes sense, in this race, where then you get a little more buy-in, you know, the developer, more input, if they're asking for a variance, I mean, like, you know. It's logic and.
Other opinions, Mr. Streeter? So.
You're on mute, Jim, if you're there.
I kinda concur with what Jason is, uh, Rush, who said, uh, you know, his, his comments, so I'll go along with that.
All right, you know, then we'll have the, you know, what would be the possibility of larger buildings would be, again, from north of us. North of us, I'm sorry, east of the highway. That would be, yeah, larger.
You know, because to Terry's point, you know, if, if you, if you maximize the use of the larger parcels up there in that corner. You know, you could still end up with multiple four-story buildings, which is, is, oh, you know, a lot more units than, obviously, or impact that we have now. And then, you know, you, you get a six-story building on the other side there, uh, that's adding a lot of housing.
Yep.
Maybe that little corner of, uh, the greater town of Rotten doesn't have to shoulder the entire burden of bringing in six thousand housing units.
Right.
You know, uh, but I, I think that, uh, respecting the public's feedback on the four-story limit in that part of town, city. Um, is, is the right thing to do, and we're still making for a possibility of a good number of housing.
I think that makes sense, and I think if someone wants to do another, the studies that would be required to do that, the traffic studies and other things. You know, it would be important to have.
And the other thing I'd suggest is some type of minimum lots size. So you don't have some miniscule law where somebody is getting a lot of units. Law might not really be able to handle.
Won't use a lot, it'll be, it, the metrics will be per acre, not per lot. So.
Shouldn't you have more than one acre in, in there in order to take advantage of the zoning? Some guy comes in with a relatively small piece of property, he's got a density of forty units per acre, it doesn't really give you much flexibility and so on.
If. The, but if his lot is smaller than one acre, it's, it's portioned.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but that seems to me, when you're dealing with that kind of density, you don't have a lot of ability. To, to design something that works, I think, don't you need a bigger parcel for this really to be able to be planted, designed properly?
Yeah, I, well, I think that's not by design, if you're talking about a, you know, a half acre or less, you just won't be able to put, you know, a four-story. Seven-minute building.
Right, and that's why I'd go to have some kind of little block size.
The, of is still, is less of an issue, if you've ever been to. Downtown Philadelphia, um.
Wow.
It's got, they have. My daughter lives in one, so painfully familiar with it, they're very, very narrow lots. That are three stories, and they're all townhouses sandwiched together, um. What I'm saying is, the design is possible, the question is, is it, and, and then this is a. It's one of the reasons we have all the other things in the text. And I can go through that and. Make sure we have. The things that I think are important.
Okay, I, I just don't wanna see a site where you just get this kind of horribly designed thing just because they can do it.
I, um, that's unfortunate.
All right, is that. So it's, it's all looking at. Reasonable consensus here about what the next. Step would be for, for you to go out and pull something together for us to look at.
Yes, can I just run through all of the.
Yeah, because we, we didn't quite talk about.
So. Okay, so the. East side of Bain Street. Which is basically at the bottom of the cliff that comes down from church, or behind the houses, would be two stories.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Um, across the street and up to Fairview. Would be thirty-five to fifty. Part of that's, that's two to four. Okay. Then. Across the street from, uh, across Fairview, you have. Seventy Bridge Street that we heard tonight, to give you a.
Fourth property.
Right, and that's two stories, um, but it could conceivably go, you know, came down and wanted to go down the corner. It could go to four stories plus. From that. From Fairview over to the exit. Would be a maximum of fifty feet. With two-story, additional stories allowed below in that.
Thirty-five, thirty-five feet above street level essentially, right?
Fifty, fifty feet, first story.
Okay.
Fifty feet above.
That's on the, that's on the, that's on the north side.
Right, on the north side, plus two. Below that you can't see. So at the, at street level so far.
At street level on, on the look like Bridge would be four stories.
At, at street level so far, everything that I just said, nothing will be higher than four stories. Uh, across the street where Norm's and Forty-Five, where Forty-Fives used to be, that would be. Thirty-five, that's two stories.
Right, yeah.
Then a two-story max, thirty-five feet in the triangle.
Right.
Uh. Outer lights, that whole property and, uh, the property with the, with the hotel. All on the north side of Bridge Street would be fifty-two, seventy-five.
We, we, so, so fifty would be a minimum?
Yes.
Okay, so they have, you know, four stories.
Correct.
Okay, but that, that makes sense.
Right.
You could use that, but, but we still have the.
Only place.
But we've got that, we've got the, there's that plaza in, it's there now, right, that.
Right.
Where what outer light is. But if it was a four-story minimum, we'd be done non-conform.
They would be pre-existing, non-conforming, uh. That's correct.
So I. Didn't wanna. Do that. You know, I mean, that, it, it's the same thing, but hopefully, the whole town, that's. Pre-existing hotel back there is a two-story.
We can put thirty-five to a thirty-five foot minimum.
Yeah, I mean, but just, just commit, just don't worry making anybody nod, yeah. You know, that's.
Okay. Um. And then with your permission, I think we have a little bit of a messy situation across the street, I would like to, um. Talk to the people that are property owners over there, and.
Well, for the area south of the triangle on North Street, uh, last time when we were discussing it with the board.
While in the area goes to open space.
Yep, yep, and the remainder of that, I thought we'd just resolve, just leave it. As it is.
So leave it as G C.
Yes, existing, the existing G C along the.
Looking to the same.
East side of North Street.
Yeah.
We can do the same across the street.
Um, and then, then, then on, on the, on the west side, I forgot, we're gonna, we're gonna just make that open space, right? That. One there.
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh. Uh, uh, you know, I'm willing to do whatever the property owners on, along Broad Street.
For you.
Whatever, whatever works with them in terms of, you know, in terms of public, public.
Yes.
All right, is that.
Of course, for me, I, I think I, yeah.
Go ahead.
I really.
Yep, go ahead.
On the east side of. Things and Bridge, that, that is.
Yeah.
Right now, there is a big deserted building, and it's written. The one that, with the sort of, um, portico, yes.
Please, most recently a group home.
You want state.
No, it was a state-owned experience, yeah, more, more recently it was a group home.
So we're limiting that area to thirty-five feet? Because it, it, where that building sits up. I mean, somebody could tear it down to street level. And. Build higher and not bother anybody. And I think if you have it as just two stories and across the street is four, I mean, that to me doesn't seem to go along with your plan of. Fight.
Your attention to the single-family residences, I took a look at that today. I think if you go any higher, you're already starting to start to feel that if nothing else, the people are looking down at something like that. I think it goes along with the whole idea of what we're doing, is transition, transition. Transitioning from the single-family to family residences to these other areas, I think that makes sense to do that.
I'll, I'll close that existing, you know, couple stories. That's it.
Plus it's still.
But, yeah, right. So it's like, they could still.
It may be almost free because I was in it one time, the attic is very hard.
Right, yeah, it's still.
But I, I mean, I agree with your point, but in the interest of getting something passed, I think. And, and the issue is well-taken. If somebody has a brilliant idea to put something there, let them present it and the community will get behind it and. You know, I, I would lean into doing more there, but.
Get it done.
Yeah, like get it done and, and like I said, there is merit. If somebody wants to go further and they can justify it, then do the reports and submit it. Yeah, if they wanted to, you know, regrade that whole corner, it would be, get another story or two out of it, that's something we. Thoughts of God, but again, we would have to be, we would not be. You know, hamstrung with, with allowing something that was greater than the public had expected for. We would have to consider it on its own merits and all those things, and we would, I think we would have more leverage to say, uh, no, that's not consistent.
The, the only thing I had mentioned before. I, I think that anything in a four stories, five, five or six, you should have a public hearing on. Even for a four-story, it makes sense that it has an impact on the, on the neighborhood, that she's. Have the ability to be heard on it.
I, I think that was the plan all along, right? That, that those height were not just, uh, build what you want, we would still have. Site plan required for up to a certain height and special permit for.
Yeah, but I was saying, in, in either event, I think the public would have been heard also.
I, I. Think that's not, they're used to be, they're used to being heard. I don't think you're gonna get. I think there would need to be a lot of education happen. To end, end a very serious norm-based code. So that people understood what the possibilities were for something was like. To be able to not have. Pitchforks and torches of every meeting, every ten seconds of the march to build. So if we change this to what we have written here. And we put in our regulations that you can hold thirty-five. Feet here. You still expect to, and, and these are based off of public hearings that we had and taking into consideration their concerns. So even after we change it, if somebody wants to build thirty-five, which is in agreement with our regulations, we have to have a public hearing. I think you may want to think about whether it's at thirty-five, but I think we're, 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 let's remember that there are two different things that you. Have site plan special permits for. One is the. One is. The bulk of the building. But another is the use. And it is typical that you have multifamily housing, it's typically a special permit. So if you have it for the use. I mean, that's how, you know, somebody comes in and says, I want to do this project and say, what do you want to do? Let's find out what zone you're in and like, you know, what kind of. Whether it's allowed or a permit you need.
Well, we're doing this for the use of multifamily housing, so.
And make it easier.
Yeah, so they should be, they're to go.
We're still allowing for the, we, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're all saying the same thing. We're still allowing for the use of. You know, housing and commercial, right? You can still have first-floor businesses.
Yep, okay, yeah. Yeah. So I, I think, I mean, where we, where we started here was we were going to allow. Up to four stories without a special permit. And then we were gonna, if you want to build taller than four stories, you'd use special. And a special permit is what requires a public hearing. So up to four stories did not require a public hearing. Right, and we want to, we want to reverse course on that, where, I think that's what Terry's suggesting, is that we require a public hearing on everything.
How about at least four stories? I mean, I, I mean, my original thing that I said a couple meetings ago, I think. Any site buildings, I think we should require a public hearing, but give the commission the ability to waive it, which we might do in a very high percentage of the cases. I, I just think both for public consumption and because you might get some good ideas, you should have public hearings on anything that has any consequence.
Well, this is, this is the public consumption piece where we propose regching.
Yeah, but three years from now, when somebody comes in, everybody's forgotten about hearings and so forth and so forth, somebody wants to build something, they should have a right to be heard. You know, I want some more landscaping because it's, it's gonna affect my view or, or whatever.
Can I add some law updates? Yeah, did people read today's paper? What else? A little blurb on the editorial page that said. If Joseph wanted to build an area manger for the Griffiths House, it wouldn't be done in time with Connecticut.
I, I think we should move forward with what we have and, you know, let's not backtrack on the public hearing for four stories, we eliminated the six stories. Let's get this out, have some public hearings about this stuff, you know, it's important that we. You know, take some action on, you'll submit the public feedback. We're having houses fighting, these people are being evicted from their homes. You know, we can't, you know, I, I just think we did some good work here. You know, I think we had a lot of work, but I feel backwards into this four-story thing, it sounds extremely exclusive, it sounds like an intent. To keep people out of our community, it sounds like an intent to prevent development, it sounds tone deaf, and I just, I just don't believe it's fair.
And, and on the other side of the scale is, I want to make sure that things are properly analyzed and that the public. Understands what the process is against the seat thing, so I don't see how, uh, getting the public involved at every stage is a problem.
All, all, all the meetings are public, the public can attend any meeting, but all are public hearing. Well, it's, but, but they have comments, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a benefit for, for providing input.
Right, I, I, I just don't get, get the opposition, getting the public involved at every company they ask.
I can tell you that it's cumbersome and.
Of course it is. Democracy is cumbersome. Having a public comment period at a town council meeting is cumbersome for the people sitting there, but that's what democracy is.
But this is actually not. This is not democracy, this is not the.
This is democracy, right? I mean, but what.
It is, it is not about. The public being allowed to vote on.
Of course they don't vote on that, but they, they have a right to be heard on it and they come up with, listen, when I'm presenting an applicant on a controversial. Uh, application, I make my presentation and I sit there and I groan and hear a lot of the same stuff over and over from the, from the people that are opposed to, but I think. The government has a right to do that. I think that's the proper way to handle it.
I think that there is a level of distinction. I think there is a point at which it becomes counterproductive to. Development, it becomes counterproductive to any kind of progress. And it's not, it, it, it doesn't really matter. Somebody coming in and saying, but I would like you to put shutters on those windows. Number one, they don't have the authority to do that. Because you can't regulate style and public can't assess done it. You end up with ugly building. Because you end up with the public saying, I want pink shutters on that so that it matches the paint in my bathroom.
That, that, that's not what I'm talking about. And of course, people can say anything they want. A lot of times at public hearings, they say things that are completely irrelevant. Like I hear it all the time, but.
Yeah, and, and the point there is that if you have an applicant that is trying to work within the boundaries that we're setting out in regulations. Why delay that process by making them suffer through a public hearing?
I don't know, I, I, I completely disagree with you guys on this. I think the public has a right to be heard. Whether it's productive or not productive, it's not gonna stop anybody from developing.
Well, I think we should just set a threshold at which the public, you know, it becomes, becomes a special permit, the public gets it.
It's a way, and I think that's a.
I can take issue with the, nobody's saying the public shouldn't be heard. I mean, I'm the first one, we're all here, we want, we're, you know, this is an issue of public here, we have a job to do, set the regulations, we're working to do that. And, you know, there's a balance here and the public can always be heard with changing these regulations in the future, we're a future. Body like this, it can take it up and address it.
Of course, but I.
The, the issue is, the perception is, with the housing crisis the way it is, you know, to create hoops. Unnecessarily for new housing in our community sends a message that we, we aren't welcoming. Anyone else that, that doesn't already have economic status. We are already seeing people being evicted from their homes. By a developer because, and we, we all know what's happening, it's gentrification. Housing values goes up, rents go up. So what we're doing here, we've done some great work, let's move forward, let's get this in front of the public and let's, let's. Address the issue. There's nothing, we, we, we took six stories off the table, we took public comment under consideration, you know, let's, let's. Have a public hearing and move forward.
I'd agree. Anybody else? Mr. Street, any comment from you?
No, I, I think the public is, is, on this issue has already spoken. We've, we've considered their comments. And we, as a commission, evaluated it and readjusted it, and I think we go from there. I don't think it necessarily needs to go back to the, to the public. For another hearing, so they have a vote on it. No, that's why we have a commission.
Well, and the public will get to weigh in on these very decisions again.
On the regulations, yeah.
On the regulations.
But just not on every project. All right, I, I think that's, I, I think that's the consensus.
So is everything gonna be. Still the four and up, over four?
Over four is, is a, would be special permit. Right? Over four at street level.
Yeah. Yes. Well, do you want it over the four from street level or four and fifth? If it's too below the street.
That's, I think that's exactly why you said that.
Yeah.
Exactly what you said, what?
Why Paul said, we're from street level, so in the, in that one little spot where you could get four stories at street level.
Yeah.
But you just make it behind it.
Yeah, and I'm questioning, should we have a hearing for that one?
That's still six stories, I would say.
How's it hurt?
Does it help?
Yeah.
How?
Above four.
I, I just, yeah, it's a street revolution, right?
I, I agree with what you're saying.
Is the street level, right? That, that was the concern, wasn't it? If it's, if it's, if it still looks like four stories from this, from the, from the street level, what?
It still have impacts from a six-story building, doesn't, not just necessarily visually.
I, I.
But then you're talking about, I think. The use of the building in terms of impact.
Yeah.
So the, it may, it is entirely possible that you would have a four-story building. Where the use of the building could trigger a special permit.
Also.
If the use requires a special permit. Let's say instead of housing, somebody wanted to put in.
A, a four-story office.
You, you can't have that, right? The four stories is only residence, you got, you can have office or commercial on the bottom, they're not authorizing anything other than residences on two, two on off.
At the bottom of that's correct.
Yep.
So. But let's say somebody came in with a proposal that said, I want to do a four-story building. Let's do it as, like, what I want to do inside is, you know, bake doughnuts, all right? Then if we allow bake, you know, if we allow manufacturing in some sort. As a special permit, then it would trigger the special permit.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, we've got.
Okay.
Good.
I will have a draft. I will have a draft, I'll leave as soon as I'm, once I can get it.
We're all sorry.
Thank you, I think. I'll be checking this out.
And Jason will be able to hear your work on it. All right.
Great, this is really good.
Great, so we're, we're, we're finishing that item. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate everybody's input on that. All right, um, report of staff. The need, the twenty, the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, with the low of, sorry, any, any report from commissioners? No, anybody? Okay, public communications, do we get any room?
No, here it goes.
Report of staff, so the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule.
Which is already published in the. City calendar. So. We actually went over it. I think it might have been on a night that we either didn't have a forum or didn't have time or forgot. But if there's a, if there's a holiday when the building is closed or on a Monday. Meetings are pushed to Wednesday. I promise you, I will tell you, I will warn you ahead of time if there's a Wednesday meeting soon. But it's also available online and it's available in the, uh, calendar, the city.
This is, this is, uh, uh, not due to city, uh, boards and commissions. The Connecticut General Statute requires you to set your annual calendar meeting scheduled by thirty-one January each year. What happens in the city is this calendar is set by the city clerk and then we are told what our schedule is and hopefully it jives with what we thought was.
And it has been sent to the, to the state.
What is the regular meeting, what day is it?
Regular meetings are, are Tuesday, but it's the third Tuesday of every month at six-thirty. Those are the regular meetings.
January, February, sometimes.
January and February are always pushed a day.
I don't have the call, I got the word for four days. It's the third, third, uh.
Third Tuesday.
So.
That's what's up there. All right, so we, but we don't have, but we don't have to adopt that, right? The city sent it to the state so everybody's happy.
That's really what the schedules require, is that, that schedule provides to the state.
And it was.
As I'm like going to jail. The other question I had for, for Leslie was anything new on the meeting audio and video post? What's that?
It goes through the mayor's office.
Okay, so, so the, so the mayor's.
This recording will be given to the mayor's office and. They've figured it out. They'll do it.
All right. I, I think in a recent previous meeting, Paul, that I think you took an action to reach out to Mayor. You know.
And we, we did, yeah. And, and, you know, you, you did reply that, uh, that, you know, they were working on it and I, I could follow up with them and see. You know, where it stands.
Well, we just, obviously, we, we, we received a lot of the feedback and. You know, I, I think it's, it's important that Mayor understands just how important it is to us to, how we caught the middle, you know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing, is. Provide the right level of medication and. I think the public feedback was justified and that's, since it's not in our power to fix it, you know, it's, it's on the mayor, so. I, I think any of us that, that, that can reach out can probably help add weight to that request.
Okay, I, I, I actually, I looked up the email, I got back to the mayor, I looked at it, so I'll, I can follow up. Anything else, Leslie, from?
I do want to say thank you guys to. I appreciate the compromises that the mayor thought that was not into this, I think that's all.
Also, because we, as, as, as I said, there is a, there's a, there's a. There's a problem and the problem is a shortage of housing and it's, that costs all kinds of other stuff, people are getting displaced. There's a problem, and the problem is a shortage of housing, and it's, that causes all kinds of other stuff, people are getting displaced. And because there's, there's no place for them to go, so they're, you know. There's no, you know, there's, there's no other options.
And well, I don't, I don't think we're currently experiencing a wave of, uh, applications to.
We're not, they're all waiting for this. There, there's several developers who are waiting for us to make decisions.
Because right now, they're, they're having to buy the two, two spur.
Right.
But anyway, I, you know, I mean, it's a. It's a, it's a chance to, to do two, two good things, one is to provide housing, and, you know, the rest to give what we wish to things.
And where I think, we, I think we have actually a capacity, the possibility of doing even more. Ability to do with all of the traffic work that's happening on Bridge Street, um. The tactical optimism installation that will be going in, there's also, uh, going to be a. Public meeting led by DOT about, they're gonna be doing work on the. Northbound side of the bridge. And what that impact will be on Bridge Street when they do it, and they're gonna be detours and. Variety of things over the next few years, the thirtieth is going to be when they, the thirtieth of this month. In the auditorium will be a meeting for that, I would encourage you all to go, um, be a really good opportunity to talk to them about. Uh, and hear what they have planned. Uh, we got a, a quick. Relatively quick, uh, permanent, other best, quick introduction to it, which I always, I know enough to know there is change. Um, but it's. I think we have the possibility with these changes to make Bridge Street become a place. And develop a gateway to Fame Street. And, and fully. Make the, play the flags.
Good, all right, um. No executive session, so, uh, motion for adjournment?
So move from Vermont.
So, move, what's your permission, Streeter, and then second permission for raise? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Six zero zero, thank you, everyone, at three twenty-three.
Hey, that is democracy. Better or worse? Bye, and you.